Is Ken going to give us a thumbs up? Or are we just gonna go blindly? I'm going to call the meeting to order if we can all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. We're going to open our meeting with an inspirational moment. Board member Terry Amos is sending her regrets that she cannot be here tonight. She unfortunately has to take a class in engineering this evening and could not attend. She did send her inspirational moment and Howard Dorsey has graciously agreed to pinch it for her. Mr. Dorsey.
Good evening. When many of us hear the word hero, our mind immediately turns to fictitious characters such as Batman, Superman, Spider-Man, et cetera. Most of us do not automatically think of a bus driver, school bus drivers. A hero is defined as a person who is admired or idealized for courage, outstanding achievements, or noble qualities. Similarly, an old proverb says, "A hero is a man who is afraid to run away." At the last board meeting, we recognized a bus driver for a heroic act of helping to save a man in distress. After that meeting, we had other bus drivers show courage and nobleness. One of our drivers was one of the first on the scene of an accident where a student from another district was injured. Another bus- Here are some of their responses. Cheryl Colley said, "Having patience and loving what I do." Susie Cordy said, "Being a school bus driver in Warren has been my favorite job, despite getting up at five." The best job ever. Rick Wall said, "I'm one of the most reliable, dedicated, and trained special needs drivers. They deserve the best." Sissy Oliver Johnson said, "Being a bus driver for twenty- The next day, they are hugging you and celebrating their accomplishments. I love it." Cheryl Colley said again, "Being a bus driver to me is having patience with our kids, paying attention, listening when they need someone to talk to, passing out lunch money when needed, and always do good morning to your kiddos. It goes a long way." Raven Henry said, "Being a bus driver means understanding my students' struggles." I want each and every child a smile and a ray of sunshine from the very first person they see on their journey up to learn at school. The children are our future, and I get such a wonderful feeling that I play a small role in that journey to their future, figure outside of the home children see each day. I want to personally thank each and every driver's-
I've listed my activities for the last month. I would highlight a couple of those. As you can see, legislator engagement is picking up earlier than it has in the past. Later tonight, you'll hear from Ryan Russell some impact that how the DOE is collecting our ADM data has changed a little bit this year and how attendance plays a role in that. I attended Home Fest on Friday, September 3rd. As you know, we had to cancel that- So one of my superintendent spotlights, we normally don't highlight homecoming queens, but we do when they are the place kicker for our football team. She has a soccer scholarship that she'll be playing soccer at University of Wisconsin next year, and it was just neat to see her walk out on the football field with all the other students. Board, I included in your folders this evening, we have several community events coming up. The first is tomorrow, September 16th, the Pleasant Run Community Fest. It's an opportunity for individuals 12 and older to get vaccinated. It's an employment fair, and it's also a resource fair. You are welcome to attend that tomorrow night from 6:00 to 7:00. We are also holding an Indiana Immunization Coalition Clinic. Kim Howard has done a great job. School-aged children are required to get their immunizations. That has been a challenge for some of our families this last year and a half of the pandemic. So this clinic will offer a flu shot, school immunizations, as well as the COVID vaccination, so all in one stop. That will be at Morehead Community Resource Center on September 29th. Many of you were aware, a couple of years ago, we had Eastside Redevelopment Committee. We are bringing that back, and I will extend an invitation to school board members for that. This first one will be virtual on September 29th at 8:00 a.m., so be looking in your mailbox for an invitation to that. And then the last one is one that we are very proud of. Mr. Taylor, James Taylor, and his team, along with several community partners, IPS, Cafe, Indiana Black Expo, are putting on housing and rental assistance workshops next Monday and Tuesday, which those will be held at Morehead Community Resource Center from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. and 12:00 to 7:00. And then on Wednesday, September 22nd, will be held at Indiana Black Expo Headquarters next to the YMCA on Short Ridge, and that one is at 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. So if you have individuals, neighbors, friends that would benefit from any of these community events, please share those with them. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Hanson. We're going to begin with board comments, and we will begin with Julie.
A bunch of children in uniforms in the back, and this is Boy Scout Troop, oh, I meant to say Scout Troop 161. And I say Scout Troop because I don't know if you know it, but girls are now able to be a part of the Scouts. So I'm going to ask the kids just to, one at a time, to stand up, say their name, and what school they go to, and so I just want to make you aware that some of these are going to be ladies. So let's start that corner right back there in the front. And these children are young adults, actually. They're, as you noticed, they're middle and high school, are working on their, I'm guessing it's the Citizenship of the Community Merit Badge. And one of their requirements is to come to a political meeting, and school boards count for that. And I was at their meeting last week because another requirement is to talk to someone who is a politician, although I don't like that word for us, but it qualifies. So I spent the night with them, talking to them about being on the school board. So thank you for being here.
Thank you, Julie. Howard?
Yeah, I, it's been a tough few days, or a tough few weeks, really, coming into this, this board meeting. But, but, but something that I've been paying attention to that's really got me a little troubled, and that is, when I read the news, I've been reading about places like Arizona where, you know, school boards are under attack, if you will, because of their, some of them are politically related or politically affiliated and that sort of thing. Hey, I just want you to know, you're looking up in here, we are not politicians. We, we are nonpartisan. We don't care what your political situation is. We are concerned about the kids, okay? Our board's greatest concern is, like I said, the kids, but it's, our greatest concern is their education, for one, their health, particularly in this COVID time, and their safety. Very concerned about security and safety of our kids. So if somebody's out there trying to, trying to ask you, you know, are they Democrat or are they Republican or whatever, no, 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 they're nonpartisan, and they're all about the kids. If it has anything to do with the kids, we're all there. If it has anything to do about the other stuff that's out there, go talk to somebody else. I just want to share that with you.
Thank you so much, Howard. Gloria?
Hello, everyone. I am so happy that Julie recognized this group of young people. I just want to encourage the young people to continue to stay involved in positive activities because you are our future, and you look so good out there. I enjoyed what Howard had to say about heroes. My husband was a bus driver for 34 years, so I know about this bus driving, and he enjoyed it. He stayed in it so long, and he's retired now. But I want to say thank you to all of our bus drivers for doing an excellent job. And you know what? In addition to our bus drivers, we have a lot of heroes here in Warren Township. Our teachers, we'll start with them, because they're heroes. Every day, they go in and help our students, and I want to say thank you to our teachers. Not only our teachers, but our assistant teachers, our counselors, when they help us with crisis that goes on in our school system, they're there. So those are our heroes with our students, and I just want to say thank you publicly to them. And I would like to say thank you to our officers. I attended the Home Fest, and I also attended the football game where, oh, it was a good game against North Central, and we won. And our officers, they do a great job. They have a lot of responsibility, and I felt very special, you know, the, going to those two events because they were there to help in every capacity. And I would like to give a shout out to all of our police officers here in Warren Township. They are our heroes also. And we could go on and on because we have a lot of heroes, but I did want to point those out because they make a difference. And you can see as you walk in how organized they were. So I'd like to say thank you. And like I said, thanks to all of you, regardless of what position you hold, you are our heroes also. So give yourself a pat on the back because you deserve it, and thank you for all that you do, and thanks for coming out tonight.
Thank you, Gloria. LaShawna's having a little bit of lag on her end, so she asked that I read her comment, and it was that the Warren Arts and Education Foundation is continuing to do great things for our district to enhance the arts departments and support their, support our teachers. As for myself, I also attended Home Fest with many of the people here, and all of the home football games so far. I do want to give a shout out to Issane Jacob and the Athletics, Athletics staff. Three home football games in a row, including the first one being against Center Grove, and they have really done a pretty seamless job of taking care of things and making sure everyone is safe and secure and that things ran smoothly, so great job there. Home Fest was wonderful with the race, and the vendors, and the food, and just everything that went on that night. It was, it was good to be able to see everyone and to have that sort of evening happen again, even if it did happen under slightly different circumstances than it has in the past. I do want to quickly acknowledge that we have had some pretty deep losses within the district. Longtime employee and real stalwart of Porter, Linda Curtis passed away, and she will be missed. I don't have anything real deep to say, but I was checking emails, and I've got emails from her from 15 years ago. So she will be missed. She was a really, really important part of the district for a very, very long time. So with that, we're going to move to the beginning of board correspondence with Julie.
We do have correspondence. We got a very nice card from the Lighthouse Community Church on Rawls Avenue, and I'm going to pass it down so you can all look at it and read it.
In addition to that, we did receive one other piece of correspondence. "To the Children's Staff and the Public of MSD Warren Township. Due to unforeseen circumstances, I have decided that it is in the best interest of my family as well as my duties as a Warren Township School Board Member to resign my responsibilities as a Warren Township School Board Member. I would like to thank all of those that have supported me during the past 13 years of being a Warren Township School Board Member. It has been an honor to serve the kids, staff, and public of Warren Township. Thank you all again for your support and a wonderful 13 years serving as your board member. May God bless all of you always. Michelle Wright." "As the board has received a letter of resignation signed by Michelle Wright and dated September 14th, we do now have a vacancy. Beginning on Monday, September 20th and ending Friday, October 1st, we will be taking applications via the district's HR portal, which can be found under the HR tab on the district website. We will be conducting interviews from those applications on October 6th and 7th. We recognize that those dates fall within our scheduled fall break, therefore, if necessary, interviews may be conducted via Zoom. Any questions may be addressed to our district spokesperson, Dennis Jarrett." Sorry, yes. Also, applications can be dropped off at the front desk of the administrative building. And with that, we are now moving on to the Mayor's Neighborhood Advocate, Allison Mundell.
Hi, everyone. I'm Allison Mundell, the Mayor's Neighborhood Advocate for this area. So a couple of announcements for the city is Indigo just received a large federal grant to complete the Purple Line, which will be starting construction by the end of this year, and that goes down 38th Street and up Post Road. And then additionally, Indigo, in partnership with Marion County Health Department, is having pop-up vaccinations sites at the Carson Transit Center downtown, and they're providing folks who get vaccinated there with a 31-day free Indigo Pass. Then, kind of building off of the Indigo Line, the Metropolitan Development Commission just passed the Transit Oriented Development Plan, which will go into effect November 1st, so it will be developing more mixed-use, commercial and residential near transit lines. And then the Circle City Forward Phase 3, as part of Mayor Hogshead's budget, is working to construct $25 million worth of greenways and trails in Indianapolis, and that actually just passed Monday through the City County Council. And some of those trails include expanding the current Pleasant Run Trail and then adding new trails near Grassy Creek Park. If you have any questions, I have my contact information up here as well.
Thank you so much, Allison. We appreciate it. With that, we are now to public comments. Do we have any yellow cards, Julie?
No.
We do not? Okay. The next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda consists of the Approval of Minutes, the Financial Report and Payroll Claim, the Financial Report Claim Register and Electronic Payments, Financial Report Year-to-Date Summaries of Fund Balances, Human Resources Report, Permission to Accept Gifts and Grants, Change Orders, Contracts, and a Technical Correction to Policy 4430 on Leaves of Absences. Do I have a motion for the Consent Agenda?
I make a motion.
Thank you, Gloria. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Julie. Because we do have a member participating virtually, maybe, we are going to do an audible vote.
Rachel Burke.
Yes.
Howard Dorsey.
Yes.
LaShawna Triplet. LaShawna Triplet.
Do you have a vote on the consent agenda? Sorry.
I said yes. Can you hear me?
We can. Thank you.
Gloria Williams? Yes. And yes for me. That's unanimous.
And so the consent agenda passes unanimously. Thank you. We will now be moving on to our reports, beginning with the COVID safety protocol review with Dr. Hanson.
If you could go up where we could see all of the table, that'd be great. Thank you. Board, in July, when we approved our safety protocols, I shared with you and our community that we would bring to you each month a review of our data and any updated recommendations to our safety protocols. Last month, I brought to you the Marion County positivity rate at 10.5. As of today, uh, it is 11.67, so, um, slightly higher than it, than it was a month ago. Uh, the table here illustrates the data from our schools. Since our last board meeting, as you can see, we have been increasing since the beginning of the school year. August 23rd through the 27th was hopefully our peak. Um, if you remember, that was the week that we transitioned one of our intermediate middle schools to virtual, uh, for a period of time. Right after that week, on September 1st, Governor Holcomb passed an executive order or released an executive order that provided some flexibility with how we quarantine close contacts. So if you noticed that week, we quarantined almost 1,000 individuals, uh, or quarantined and isolated. Then you'll see, once that executive order went into place, that those numbers have started to go down as well as our, our COVID cases. So we, we hope we're heading in the right direction here, um, as we head into fall break. But my recommendation for, uh, tonight is that we maintain the implementation of our current COVID safety protocols, um, that we approved at the August 18th board meeting and that we continue to follow the quarantine guidance, uh, within the September 1st executive order. Um, Kim, if you could click on that first COVID protocol. I just want to bring to the board's attention as well as our community's attention that these are on our website, um, the, the link. These are hot links on, on the review data sheet, so you can take a look at that. And Kim, if you could scroll, please. So all of our current protocols are, are listed on our website. Board, be happy to answer any questions for you if you have them. Tonight, we're, we're not seeking any action because nothing is changing.
Not seeing any questions or comments. We will move on to the construction update with Mr. Clayton.
All right. Good evening, President Burke, Dr. Hanson, distinguished members of the board. I get the, the fun job tonight. I get a chance to go through our monthly construction update. I do, before I start, want to, um, welcome our partners from Skillman, Victor Lanfair and Tony Heath. Thanks for coming out tonight. Starting off with Lowell Elementary, and I'm proud to say that we are 86% through phase number two. So let's take a look at where we're at. We've come, and we have some visuals to support this, um, this progress. We've completed the new playground striping. We've completed directional signage. And then we've also, along with the phase two renovations, we've completed seven of the, uh, south classrooms. I had a opportunity to stop by Lowell, um, back on Monday and had an opportunity to speak with our, our fearless leader there, who's done such a great job with all the challenges, all the adversity. Um, they, they are looking forward to the, the construction being over, but they're also very understanding of the challenges that lie ahead. Um, and those classrooms look great and those students, um, they take a lot of pride in the changes that have taken place already. Continue remaining phase two renovations. We need to continue to complete the air handler units serving the media center. Continued overhead mechanical, electrical and plumbing in the existing cafeteria and start at the wall framing and electrical rough ends for new conference room, the clinic, the workroom and the teacher's lounge. And this is what this looks like. There's a phase two classroom and again, if you haven't had the opportunity to go by Lowell, please do, because it's just a, um, really a snapshot of what our elementary, other elementary schools will look like as well when this, uh, construction project completes here in a few years. As I mentioned, they started the interior stud framing on the new corridor as well as the existing cafeteria and there's the playground striping. And those kids were out there very excited about that. Continue remaining phase two renovations. Again, complete the new overhead mechanical and electrical plumbing rough ends with new sprinkler system. We'll start hanging the, hanging and finishing the drywall in the new conference room, staff rooms, rest, staff restrooms and teacher's lounge. And then as we transition to the start of phase three, and again, we're 86% through phase two, we'll start the interior demolition and renovation, exterior two-story wall demolition and reconstruction, and then complete the remaining site work. Going to plant new trees at, on the north parking lot and seed the lawns, lawns around the areas by the bus lot. All right, Warren Central High School. As you guys know, this is a very strenuous and comprehensive project, especially when you consider a lot of the underground infrastructure and the, the pipes that we had to, to put in, um, throughout the campus. But we're 72% through phase one. At the site, we've completed the fence column footings and multipurpose field, continued demolition of existing sidewalks and curbs, continued grading and drainage for lot number five, and continue the new sidewalks and curbs, which I'm really excited about. Progress to date, believe it or not, the admin building used to sit right here in this area, but as you can see there, that is now the site of some new storm drainage as well as the sidewalk out of lot number five. There along the 16th Street side by the new multipurpose field, you see the fence columns and the footings are up, getting ready to get that fence going here soon. And then as I spoke, spoke to just here shortly ago, the sidewalk that's being put up right there near the freshman academy. Again, that's going to be great for our students, um, as well as our, our visitors that come and visit our school. And the performing arts area, the projection screen has been put up and ready for use. Interior renovations, continue adjusting the new doors. And then also, and this is key, complete the foundations at door 18 and 21. Door 18 and 21 is critical to the, the completion of this, this project on the west side of the building. Once we're able to get 18 and 21 complete, now we can start transitioning to phase two, which, um, that's going to be a task in itself because we're looking at specifically door number one, the interest to the high school, and then door 70, that interest to the Walker Career Center. This is what 21 and 18 look like right now. Well, at the site, we'll continue working on the drainage, the demolition of existing sidewalks and curbs, demolition of lot four, continue the new sidewalks and curbs, and then the new additions, complete the masonry foundations at door 18 and 21. As I mentioned, the underground utilities and continue the foundation work at the Hall of Fame. And then here in the next 30 days, complete the project screen installation, complete new door adjustments. All right, Grassy Creek, we're about 22% through phase one. And, uh, when I spoke to you last month, we were talking about permits and the lack of permits and, um, thanks to our, our partners over there, we, we finally got the city to start granting and turn over some of those permits so we can get to work. What we've been able to accomplish thus far, start at the erosion control as well as the site demolition, the drainage pipes and structures. As you know, that's really the initial steps at, at all of our campuses is to modernize that drainage and the, the pipe structures. On the interior, completed bulkheads in the classrooms, completed ceiling grid in the classrooms, the corridor, completed border ceiling tiles as well as the finishes, the ceiling finishes, including the lights. So again, this underground infrastructure is so critical and quite honestly, it's required now by, by the city and that's the starting point at pretty much all of our, our sites. Here are the classroom border tiles as well as some of the ceiling finishes. So we, we are starting to make some progress. At the site, we'll continue underground storm and sewer piping, start the underground storage system for phase one, remove light poles on the west side of the school, leaving two near the south end for teacher parking and that's critical there, that we want to make sure that our teachers have lights. As we know, it's getting darker earlier and it's staying dark a little bit later. So we want to make sure from a safety standpoint that those teachers and our administrators have, and our students have, uh, plenty of lights as they, as they enter. New additions, start the building pad earthwork for the new addition, the underslab plumbing prior to footings and start footings for the new addition. And here and again, in the next 30 days, we're going to complete ceiling finishes, including lights, inspections of end wall and overhead rough end, installation of casework, installation of flooring, and all mechanical and electrical plumbing finishes, including ceiling mounted fan coil units, start visual displays and start replacement of exterior windows. And then at Pleasant Run, we're about 22% through phase one. And at the site, we'll continue the underground storm and sewer piping, continue the underground storage system for phase one, the curbs as well as the new bus lots, and then the new additions, the under, completed underslab plumbing and they've started the footings. Now, right now, that's not a very impressive picture, but I guarantee you, when I come back in December, it's going to look a lot better than this. Yeah, and the new boilers arrived and this is a picture of the installation process of these boilers. The bulkhead framing in the corridor and then the footings in the southeast corner of a building. Next 30 days, start construction entrance, complete binder course at the bus parking lot, complete phase one underground site work, and then the new additions, the building footings, the storm and sanitary underslab piping, start the foundation of the masonry and start prepping for the concrete floor slabs. Interior-wise, complete the drywall, interior paint, ceiling grid, new lights in the corridor and classroom, and start the restroom piping, insulation. And again, as we know, it's a, it's a process and, you know, as, as we say and as it says right there, we're connecting tradition with innovation. So we're going to continue to make progress every month and make sure we create these exceptional learning environments for our, our students and our teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Clayton. Next up, we have Mr. Ruffsel with enrollment updates and summer school updates.
Good evening, President Burke, Dr. Hanson, members of the board and community tonight. I'm here to give you an update on enrollment slash ADM, which for those of you who don't know is average daily membership, which really doesn't mean average daily membership, but at the center of it all, it's how many students we have that we actually get funding for. Just a reminder of board goals, uh, at the heart of ADM is really about foundational funding, uh, so maintain financial stability and providing high-quality teachers and administrators obviously from that funding and in terms of our strategic plan focus area, investing in our efficiencies. So this is a snapshot of the past three years. Specifically, I went back to 1819 and you see two numbers here. As you know, we have both a fall and a spring count. So the state actually calculates the number of students that we have. Historically, the number of members or students that are enrolled in our district directly equates to the foundational funding that we get. So as we've talked over the years in terms of what our overall enrollment numbers are, we also have to account for what they are in the fall versus what they are in the spring because of the, the ways funds are distributed. So back in fall of 2018, we were sitting at 11,877 students compared to the count in the spring, uh, same school year, new calendar year in terms of February of 2019 was 11,724. We continue to see a decline that next year in the fall of 2019, for the 1920 school year, we had 11,592 and then you saw that dip, um, just a little bit, approximately 100 students, 11,499 in the spring. Then when we look at last year, uh, our eight, fall ADM count was 11,427. And then in the winter count or the February count, uh, we dipped up, dipped up, it's an oxymoron, but we went up just slightly to 11,449. So as we were making projections this year and other aspects, we, we take a look at obviously the historical, uh, numerical data that we're looking at. I'm not here to give you a number for where we currently sit right now, um, although we do believe we're trending in a much better direction. That graph that you see, uh, is, is heading downwards. However, we do believe based on the calculations, uh, that that number will be increasing. We just simply don't have an exact number at this point. Why is that? Historically, ADM funding was always based on membership. And what membership means is how many students are enrolled at your school on an ADM count day. So therefore, if we have 11,400 students currently enrolled, that's membership and we will get funding or foundational funding for 11,400 students. Based on some change in some legislation, uh, membership is not the sole calculation for ADM funding anymore. It's actually based on attendance as well. And there's a few reasons for that based on some of these, uh, bullet points. Now I will ask for you to bear with us all because this is a brand-new formula that quite frankly, even, uh, the legislators are in the state, well, not only the State Board of Ed, uh, but our Department of Education is still trying to figure out as well. One of the biggest complexity factors with this is the topic of virtual education. We knew last year, as many or should, I would even go as far as all school districts on some level had to provide some type of virtual option for their students. Under Indiana code right now, virtual education students only get funded at 85% of ADM numbers, uh, based on the foundational rate. So therefore, if you have a student who's classified as virtual, they get 85% of the full amount. We've known that. We all in the state of Indiana got a pass on that last year due to the complexity of COVID. We knew going into this year, we would not have the same flexibility in terms of receiving less funding for virtual education. Virtual, um, education, uh, we have a virtual option for our students, but by school number or basically we don't have a quote-unquote "virtual" school, meaning that Warren Online Academy or our virtual students at Hawthorne aren't classified as a separate school. Students that are virtual in K4 attend Hawthorne Elementary, uh, under Hawthorne Elementary's school number, which includes both virtual and in-person students. Warren Online Academy is configured in the same way our Renaissance School is. Warren Online Academy is a program, uh, therefore those students are associated with whatever school that, the homeschool that they reside in. So when we say virtual not counted as membership, there's not necessarily a membership designation for any of our schools that say these students are virtual and these students are in person. The way the state is calculating that is based on their attendance. So if a student is present due to, present due to COVID, that is considered a, a virtual student. The original interpretation or the original language that we were contending with is we would receive funding based we would receive funding based on any student who was in person, obviously at 100%, as long as they were in person for 50% or more of the time. Where that came in conflict is any student potentially on a quarantine or if perhaps we had a situation where we had to move a school to virtual for a period of time. We only had 37 days between our first day of school and our ADM number. So if a student, and again hypothetically, was quarantined and then the school went to virtual, we potentially would be at risk for those students only receiving 85% funding instead of full funding. So when we say virtual calculated by attendance, what we're referring to is if they are attending virtually, obviously, or attending in person based on a specific COVID circumstance. There is intent, and this was sent out by Speaker Houston and Senator Bray. There's intent to propose legislation that would consider attendance through December to make this calculation. So what that's referring to is all of our students who are currently in Warren Township, they would look at the same 50% marker, but instead of basing that 50% marker off 37 days of school, they would potentially base that 50% marker off 90 days of school. So a student would have to be in person for roughly 45 days or more to get in-person funding. Where that comes in conflict and is a challenge is that we obviously in the state nor we can predict how many students are going to be in school virtually for 45 days, 46 days or higher versus that until we get passed to the end of our first semester. So ultimately, although we may know very closely what we anticipate our number to be, the state has told us that based on calculation of attendance in December, they would retroactively either award more money based on virtual or non-virtual or they would take money away if more students were virtual than we originally reported to on ADM day. It creates a very, very complicated projection because obviously not only do we not know what's going to happen with COVID, but we have done our best to accommodate families that want a virtual program or a virtual need due to a COVID reason and those who want an in-person due to that. So I feel like I'm on a merry-go-round talking around this, but at the end of the day, it just is a point to try to illustrate the complexity of figuring out what the actual ADM number is. The short synopsis, I would say, is ADM before was basically 100% enrollment. Now ADM is based on not only enrollment, but assuming that those students are enrolled or attending and in which method they are attending as well. I feel like I confused myself when I was talking through that. Happy to answer any questions specific to that. Right now, our membership looks good. However, we can't fully predict how that will be impacted in the future, nor are we prepared to give an exact number of what that looks like until we have time to sort through all the data. Happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, you indicated that they have, there's a method where there are one, you couldn't determine or indicate the method that they're talking about. Are you talking about when, are you saying in-person and virtual or in-person and online? Are those two methods? Just as you were finishing up, you had mentioned how there were those methods.
Well, there's two modes of getting instruction, I guess I would put. So right now in Warren Township, you have two options. You can be an in-person student K through 12 or you can opt for the virtual option. So based on which option you opt for and based how many days you are in attendance for either one will determine how you're funded.
And the funding is different if you're in a virtual status versus if you're in an in-person status. Is that what you're saying as well?
Correct. 85% is for virtual.
And you get 100% for in-person?
100% for in-person, 85% for virtual.
Okay, now what about the online program? How do they determine? I mean, which one is that? Is that under a virtual?
It's under virtual.
Or is that under?
It's under virtual.
So it's under virtual as well?
Yeah.
You mentioned that you said there was an online program that is not a school. What?
So the statutory definition of a school has to do with specific requests through the DOE to officially be called a school to receive a school number for accountability purposes. We didn't statutory request to be a separate standalone virtual school. We technically have a virtual or online program due to COVID. So because of that, the way they determine funding is to look at a student's attendance to see which mode of instruction they use for 50% or more of the time. Instead of figuring that out and determining full funding between the first day of school and ADM day, which is Friday, they determine that they're going to use the whole first semester, which at this point makes it impossible to calculate the exact funding we will receive at this point because that won't be determined until December.
December would be your full semester.
Correct.
So I'm still stuck on, where is this online program?
K through four is at Hawthorne. All kids in person and virtual are at Hawthorne.
Okay.
Okay, so some of them are virtual, but most of them are in.
So which ones are the online program? That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, so we were very specific about using that language through previous conversations, which I think is what you're referring to, Mr. Dorsey. So we have a, what we're calling a virtual program, which is live synchronous learning. K through four at Hawthorne, any K through four student that opts to be in the virtual program attends at Hawthorne Elementary. For 512, any student, we're referring that to the online program. Any 512 student who opts for an online or virtual option attends through Warren Online Academy, which is housed out of Renaissance.
Okay, okay, that's where they're at.
Correct.
Renaissance, okay, I got you. Do we have a number yet of those students that are in the?
Online versus?
Online program, yeah.
Yeah, today, when I looked this morning, there were 154 K4 students online and I believe the number was 531 512 students online at Warren Online Academy.
So you're saying that even though these students are enrolled in virtual, the funding depends on how good their attendance is? So if they have very, very poor attendance, that means we lose money. Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm not. So we would opt to say a student is either present virtual or present in person. So if they're, I'm going to break it down to math that I understand. So let's say there's 10 days of school that they're opting for to calculate this. If a student was virtual for six days and in-person for four days, even though they were in person for four days, they will still only qualify for virtual funding, which is 85% of the foundational rate. Where this comes in potential conflict for us is we have students who are in person now. If they opt to move to virtual and they are in virtual more time than they are in person through next quarter, they potentially will only receive 85% funding. And that's why this is a big deal for us and why we can't predict a full funding picture.
Ryan, am I correct in saying that the transition for Stony Brook also has some implications here?
Correct. Original concern, as we said, when we made the determination that we needed to move temporarily to virtual at Stony Brook for 10 days, the original guidance was we were only going to look at the first 37 days of the school year. Half of 37 days is 18 and a half. If we had a student who was a close contact in quarantine for 10 days and then Stony Brook went virtual for another 10 days, even though that family has no intention for that student to be virtual, the state would have called that student a virtual student and only given us 85% funding. Their solution to that was to extend the window beyond 37 days into the end of the first semester, which is a support for us in those circumstances, but it also, the issue with that is it makes it impossible for us to anticipate if any students are going to move virtual and potentially get 85% funding. I believe I remember the number and tell me if I'm wrong, but 85% funding for us impacts us about $899 a student. Approximately.
So if a student is out, let's say you have a disciplinary problem and the student gets, how do you say, out of school suspension for 10 days. That doesn't affect the status of that student in reference to his online, correction, in reference to his in-person status.
You're correct. That has no impact on this.
The impact that we did experience though is if the scenario you gave where a student who may have been out for 10 days because he was COVIDed.
Correct. Either had COVID or was a close contact or something like that.
And was associated or was a student in, what school do we call it?
Stony Brook, yeah.
Stony Brook, Stony Brook.
Yeah, and those students, we still provided them their education, right? We switched to virtual. We provided that. Just like when we have a student with COVID now and if they're well enough to complete their work and if we have a close contact, we're sending them their work through Canvas and doing those things. Technically by state, the state code, we're still marking those students present, but present virtual, present due to COVID, which triggers the potential funding gap if this continues. Look, we, again, we don't know the full impact. It's just something that we're really focusing on as we try to determine the number as far as how it impacts our overall funding.
I can see how that, that's kind of confusing. Good, thanks. I mean, the explanation was good. I'm just saying that the way they've got this thing set up, it's, you know, you've got to really be paying attention. It can be very confusing.
And this letter from Speaker Houston and Senator Bray just came out, I believe, last Friday, correct? So that was just guidance slash curve ball that we're getting in the midst of trying to prepare for ultimate foundational funding.
And they still haven't decided what they're going to do until, we won't get some legislative decision until what, December, you said?
Well, until the legislative session. What the letter they sent says, they intend to propose legislation that will say this. I'm going to move on to something much more easy to talk about and much more fun to talk about. Summer school 2021. I feel like I've had many of opportunities over the past year really to talk about some of the unique opportunities we provided students, given the unique school year or school years, year and a half, 18, 19, 20 months, whatever this endeavor has meant for us and our staff. And tonight, I want to present to you a snapshot of what summer school looked like this past June for our students and share some of those successes as well within that. Talking specifically about board goals, always about offering high quality student programming to prepare our students and certainly supporting the whole child through all the endeavors that we do. I can't really think and I should have added and invested in efficiencies with this as well, but summer school as we designed it by intent certainly meant all of our strategic plan focus areas. And I'm happy to be able to share about some of those for you or with you tonight. So just as a reminder, we had a two-week summer school for kindergarten through third grade. That's not a typo. Kindergarten through third grade at two elementary schools this past summer. If you remember historically, summer school was only designated previously in the K8 realm just for third grade students and just for third grade students as a way to get remediation for failure of IREDS. We obviously determined based on the hectic and scattered school year that we needed to provide a more far-reaching opportunity for our students. So we were able to provide a summer school opportunity for all K12 students who requested it and families who requested it. Those two weeks were June 7th through June 18th. We had 283 attend at Liberty Park and 320 at Lakeside. That took place from 8:30 to 12:00 PM daily, which you're going to get a little bit of a repeat of this when I talk about grades four through eight. But ultimately, it was to engage in reading, math, socially emotional learning and provide enrichment lessons as well to those students. A little bit about it, the way that day was structured. We made sure every student had the opportunity to get a daily SEL lesson. We made sure a student got an opportunity to have a daily reading lesson and a daily math lesson. But we also knew that we needed to find a way in the spirit of what obviously we're trying to achieve with our strategic plan to give them an enrichment opportunity, a passion project or something specifically for them to work on. We also thought it was a great opportunity for teachers to really think outside of the box to come up with a creative project or something to engage their students with. So we gave every teacher a budget to be able to come up with an enrichment project to engage students in. And this is, this is K8 specifically. Anything you've ever wanted to teach or engage your students in, now's the time to try it, have fun, get your students in there with a small group. So these are just from an elementary level, just a small snapshot of that. Everything from creating boxcars and races around that as they're determining and figuring perimeter with those boxes. You see here too, obviously, we coupled that with the opportunity for students to get small group instruction, both reteaching and remediation work with enrichment side by side. Just because we need more skill work doesn't mean that we can't provide enrichment and engagement as well. We did not want to sell to students, come to summer school to get a small group reading lesson for three hours. We didn't necessarily think that was the way to hook them in. At the same time, we also know none of us want to learn that way either in terms, yes, we may need skills and we may need to work on those, but we need the opportunity to apply those skills in a unique and creative way. And you know, dare I say, we wanted to make learning fun and provide those opportunities. So again, this is just a snapshot of what you would see. Most of our teachers had less than 10 students in their room for summer school. So we tried to make it a small intimate experience for both the teacher and the student and provide them an abundance of opportunity to learn and enrich at the same time. Compared to fourth to eighth grade, obviously, you're seeing a lot of the very same language from previous page. The reason why we had the fourth graders attend at Raymond Park is because we knew next year they would be attending a 5A building. So we had our fourth and eighth, fourth through eighth grade students attend at Raymond Park. We had an attendance of 543 students there, same purpose, same why, same schedule that we had for that. Same thing, just a few snapshots here, everything from, someone did a preview of an Olympic unit. Talk about the Olympics to go through there. Olympics is favorite every two, well, I guess two years, but three years given the pandemic. And then to this picture on my right, I think it was an estimation of how many pennies can you get to float on your man-made boat or whatever with estimation skills and stuff. We even purchased Nerf guns for teachers so they could do plot and range and slope from an algebra perspective as they graph those. Again, we had fun. We engaged students and we gave them an opportunity to engage in academic content in a way that they typically wouldn't, which was fun to see. When we look at the high school, one of the most significant changes we made is we did extend a few more days, but we actually added a third period. Traditionally at high school, we offered two sessions a day. Because of the number of students that we needed to make sure to get that got in person, credit recovery opportunities, we added a period three to the day. So we had students could take up to three classes in person for summer school at the high school. Primarily focused on which students failed to earn initial credit, needed an opportunity to obtain that credit, but we also know we needed to give them an opportunity to obtain that credit from a live teacher, not just give them a username and password to an online program or whatever to do that. So that was the focus there. Obviously, we focused on the core content for that. So we had in-person teachers for all these classes plus some general opportunities for them to make up with credit recovery. At the same time, we offered eighth grade students, incoming freshmen, the opportunity to come into the high school to earn their first time PE credit in person. That's one opportunity that we can give incoming freshmen a chance not only to be in the building, to see Warren Central, but to engage and earn that credit from the start. Some people certainly liked the opportunity to earn in person, attend those and free up some opportunities within their schedule. Traditionally, we've had students who wanted to earn first time credit. For example, I want to take my econ class so I can fit in an advanced orchestra or something like that. Because the focus was on credit recovery, any first time credit classes with the exception of the freshman in PE, we did work through Indiana Online Academy to give those. So if I wanted to take, again, econ, I wanted to take Spanish III or something because I was having a hard time fitting that in my schedule to take maybe another career center class that I wanted to or something else, we gave those students the opportunity to get ahead by taking those online. In some cases, it's not feasible for us to hire an econ teacher to teach summer school when only two or three kids want to take it. But in this case, we were able to accommodate any class a student wanted to take to get ahead. And we did that through our partnership with Indiana Online Academy. We continue to offer night school for those students. So we have a lot of students engaged through Highlander Park. Highlander Park, not only for credit recovery opportunities. Some of our students simply told us that they had a great relationship with their teacher in adult ed, and could they continue to work in June and July through night school to be able to obtain those. They were working in the morning, they couldn't come to summer school, could they engage in the night classes? Absolutely. So we typically shut down adult ed summer classes through June because that's not typically, but given the need that we had, we kept that going all year for that. So just a few numbers, just to kind of highlight some of the successes. We hired over 118 staff to teach summer school, which obviously is not the full body of our staff, but obviously, it gave 118 staff members the opportunity to engage with students and to earn additional compensation. We typically send about 50 kids to third-grade I read camp every summer, and that was the only K-8 opportunity. And this year, we served 1,146 students in K-8 summer school. They got to participate in those opportunities. 912 students, we had over 1,000 students, 1,025 students who attended in-person summer school. So just from a 912 perspective, that's 2171, 2,171 students that were able to engage in that, which is just around 20% of our student, when you, 20% of our student body, when you take away the outgoing seniors. IOA enrollment, so we had 342 students earned first-time credit through IOA, which with this, as we screen students going IOA, we had a 97% completion rate in IOA in summer school, where I know some previously difficulties in the past was maybe a lack of engagement in the virtual program for that, so we're happy to see that. 188 ninth-grade PE credits, and a number I'm proud of, it's not the biggest number I'm proud of, but the number I'm proud of, we recover 2,055 credits through summer school for students who've lost that opportunity either last year through the struggles of schooling through a pandemic, or maybe even some previous credits that they needed to recover before that. But most significantly, one thing that I was thrilled about, most of you attended graduation in some form or fashion this summer. We also know we had some students who weren't able to walk because they didn't complete all their credit requirements. One thing that we were incredibly proud of is as a student earned their final credit in summer school to be able to be called a graduate, Mr. Shepler and team would call them down to the office, hand them their diploma, announce them over the announcements, and we earned 75 new graduates just from that 23-day period in summer school alone. And we're still working on those that we still haven't because we have till October 1st. But to be able to get 75 more students their high school diploma based on the work that they achieved, no, they didn't make it for our June graduation, but these students will be participating, you know, in the in the future graduation because they were able to earn it and cross the finish line. So I'm proud of the work our teachers, our administrators, and our schools did this summer. And obviously, we will continue to work hard to provide these additional summer school and intercession opportunities for our students as we move forward. But that's just a small snapshot of what we did this past summer. That was our month of June in 2021. So happy to answer any questions as long as it's not about enrollment.
Mr. Russell, I just want to congratulate you and everyone that's working with you on working so hard with our students. You know, it just brings tears of joy to my eyes just to see that we had 75 more graduates, and we're still working on, you know, we're giving students an opportunity to, you know, earn their credits and earn their degree. So that makes me feel so good because we don't want any students to be left behind. And so thank you so much for all that hard work, and I know the parents appreciate it, and I sincerely hope that we can reach 100% that all these students will jump on board and see the opportunities that are being given to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, it is plus. Right now, it's tentatively scheduled for October 4th, but I need to get some additional details, and I'll send those through Dr. Hanson. Right now, it's tentatively scheduled for October. To be honest, I'm not fully aware of what the exact plans are at this point. I know we had slated a time right after the initial graduation because our cutoff date is October 1st. I know that even though it falls over intercession, we were trying to determine the best time to do that because we wanted to do it in as similar as a fashion as the June one, to not take anything away from those students who worked just as hard to pass the finish line.
And Mr. Russell, is it possible for us to receive something that shows how many students that we have that are trying to work on trying to graduate, you know, that may have not graduated in May, but they are, you know, working towards graduation, just to see how close we are to coming to our 100%?
Yeah, we have a weekly cohort meeting that looks at specifically the class of 2021. We actually are still worried about five cohorts. We have the freshman cohort, sophomore, junior, senior, and then we have what I would refer to as this fifth-year senior cohort that we're still paying attention to. And I'm happy to provide an update in terms of where we are with those numbers. So I don't have them in my head, but happy to send that through Dr. Hanson.
Ryan, I just wanted to say as a parent who had a child that attended IOA both last summer and this summer, there's a there's a reason that the percentage went up significantly. I don't believe I was contacted at all two summers ago, and I was contacted a lot over the summer. So, yeah.
I think I got seven voicemails for my.
Yeah, and every single time I would go to my son, he's like, I'm caught up, quit asking. So.
Similar experience, yeah.
So the change that they made was a good one. If we use them going forward over the summer, we should encourage that. So, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. We appreciate the great complexities that you got to share with us tonight. Do we have any green cards, Julie?
No, we do not.
Excellent. So we will be beginning with our action items this evening, starting with item 10.01 and Mr. Simkins.
Good evening, President Burke, Dr. Hanson, members of the board, community out there. I have before you, for your consideration, proposed one-time vaccination incentive stipend of $300 for those staff who are actively employed, who voluntarily have already obtained full vaccination or wish to do so within the designated period of time up until winter break to voluntarily become fully vaccinated. We know that, and this will be paid out of our S R3 federal funds, we know that despite the challenges of COVID, in the long term, high vaccination rates are our best chance of beating this virus. And we know that we would like, as an organization, to be a leader in the community in fostering and encouraging higher vaccination rates. And that way, we can protect our staff, our students, and help mitigate the disruptions to teaching and learning. So we find it's very important to to offer some measure of encouragement to foster this this endeavor. So what can I say? Shots in arms, money in pockets.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion from Julie French. Do we have a second? And a second from Howard Dorsey. Are there any, is there any discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Julie, if you could take a vote.
Rachel?
Yes.
Howard? LaShawna?
Yes.
Gloria? And I'm a yes also.
Thank you.
And the stipend carries. Thank you so much. Oh, you get to stay up there.
I do.
Policy 3120 dot 11.
Yes, last month, I brought before you this new policy for discussion, and it's something that we've already done for a couple of years now, but now we're just going to kind of make it official and board policy that reflected in the 2019 Indiana General Assembly, SEA 390, requiring school employer and school employees to hold a public hearing and take public testimony regarding the collective bargaining law and process before formal collective bargaining begins every year on September 15th. So the policy lays out some of the stipulations on how that meeting is supposed to take place. And we had done that prior to, we usually do it prior, just prior to the August board meeting every year.
So moved.
So we have a motion to pass the policy moved by Julie and seconded by Gloria. Is there any discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Julie, if you could call a vote.
Rachel?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
LaShawna?
Yes.
Gloria?
Yes.
And I'm a yes also, so passed.
That passes. Thank you so much for your time this evening, Mr. Simkins.
Can I say one thing, Mr. Simkins?
Yes.
I do want to give a shout out to our administration for paying us to get that shot. Now, you know what? That is so awesome to give an incentive like that. You know, ordinarily, you know, those, you know, they're requiring us and asking us to please get that shot, but I think it was so thoughtful of you guys to come up with an incentive like that of $300. So that's going to make it not hurt so bad when they stick you with the needle.
That's right.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
And now we have some more policies with Mr. Russell because he's missed us.
Excuse me. So tonight, there are two, really one, well, two action items. 2623 is the student assessment policy I brought to the board last month. Basically, the key language in here is identifying that test scores cannot be used as a primary decision for placement decisions for opportunities for our students. Everything else are basic language changes. Tonight, I ask for your approval for policy 2623.
Do we have a motion?
I, LaShawna, triplet move that we accept that policy.
Okay. Gloria, would you like a second? And Gloria seconded. So LaShawna made the motion, and Gloria seconded it. Do we have any discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Julie, if you could call a vote.
Rachel?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
LaShawna?
Yes.
Gloria?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, passes unanimously.
Next, unique opportunity to ask for you to rescind a policy. Policy 5895 over student employment due to legislative action last session, I believe last March, effective July 1st. Schools have no opportunity or schools are no longer permitted to issue work permits. That responsibility has been placed on the employer. Any employer that employs more than five minor is, five minors is required to go through workforce development to issue those. So tonight, I'm asking for your approval to rescind policy 5895.
And do we have a motion? Thank you, Howard. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Julie. Is there any discussion?
I couldn't clearly hear what Ryan was saying. I apologize.
I'm asking for approval to rescind policy 5895. It's about student work permits. Schools are no longer have the availability to issue or rescind work permits. That is all based on the employer now. So really, our previous policy talked about the process for issuing work permits, which is no longer valid or meets Indiana code, and I'm just asking for us to rescind that policy.
Thank you.
Hearing and seeing no other discussion. Julie?
Rachel?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
LaShawna?
Yes.
Gloria? And I'm a yes, it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
And now we move on to Ms. Woods and another couple of policies.
President Burke, Dr. Hanson, members of the board. The first policy I'm requesting action on tonight is 8330 student records. The revision to this policy includes us being able to share records in the event of an emergency. That any information that we share with law enforcement about suspicious or potential criminal activity, we wouldn't then include that in our records. And then also that behavioral behavioral and mental health records are not kept with student cumulative files.
Do we have a motion to accept the policy?
So moved.
A motion from Julie. Do we have a second? And a second from Howard. Any discussion?
I want you to explain that a little bit more about the student records.
Yep, which part? All of it? Was there a certain?
What are you saying? That these records will or will not be shared? I didn't quite understand what you were saying.
So there's kind of three big changes. One is that if there's an emergency. So if, right now, student records are protected, but if there's an emergency where a student may need to go in ambulance because of a medical emergency, maybe DCS is involved and has to remove a child, that then we would be allowed to share student records in the event of the emergency with personnel necessary because that are involved because of that emergency. The second one is if we are asked to share any information with law enforcement because they're suspecting potential criminal activity that a student may be involved in, that we wouldn't then go add that to our records. So if it's just as an investigation and we're sharing things that we wouldn't then go in and make entry within our system of, you know, student is being suspected of this event or activity. And the final one is kind of the line between HIPAA and FERPA. So HIPAA is protecting your health records and making sure that if there are specific health records around mental health, so if they may see like a Galahue therapist in the building, the notes and records from those meetings wouldn't then be kept in the students' educational records because they have an additional layer of protection needed because they're protected by HIPAA.
What about the counselors in the building that do individual counseling? How is that handled?
So they they keep personal notes. Theirs wouldn't fall under necessarily this mental health, but they wouldn't, they wouldn't really fall into like being uploaded in the cumulative file. They would be part of the students' records, though, if it's something that they would share with other people. So if it's strategies that they're working on with students that they would share with teachers, personal notes are really protected. But once you share them with other people for reasons of needing to to support a student, you know, in education, then they would become part of those educational records. So this really deals with more the mental health medical records. Did I answer your question? Or any other questions?
So when when counselors counsel with these students, they are allowed to share that information with the teachers?
As needed and depending upon the situation. So our school counselors really provide short-term counseling. If it really is a situation where a student is going to need long-term ongoing counseling, that would then go to more of a Galahue or a long-term mental health professional. But one of the things that's great about counselors and our having counseling in our building is that we want the strategies that the students are working on with that counselor. So let's say it's anger management. I'm learning how to count to 10 or how to walk away. We want them to be able to transfer those skills into the classroom so they can be practicing. So it would be important for maybe their general teacher to know, hey, you know, Nash is working on controlling his anger. Here are some things that we're doing that if you could reinforce in class, you know, he's going to go to a cool-down area in the room, you know, how can we help create that? And also, if there's things that would be good for the teacher to know to just be able to support the student. So if there's been a change in the home or something that's really impacted the student, so the teacher can look out for changes in behavior or, you know, needs that then, hey, this this child may need some additional touch points with me. But that doesn't really apply to the changes here in this student record policy.
Ms.?
Yes?
I do have a question for clarity because I can hardly hear. For the law enforcement, are you saying that this policy wants to allow access to law enforcement or still restrict that access?
It allows it in the event of an emergency.
Okay, I got the event of emergency for like DCS and medical emergency, but the law enforcement one is where I'm a little confused and a little leery on with, so could you guys give me an example So could you guys give me an example of what would be an emergency for the law enforcement?
Sure. So we've had instances where a student's been involved with law enforcement that has an IEP, for example, that may have some specific strategies, behavior plan interventions that, you know, we've been following or need to follow. And so it would be important for them while they're working with that student, interacting with that student to have access to that information. Also, in unfortunate situations where students may be in a longer term placement, they still receive education and schooling. So they need to have access to what their accommodations and supports and services looked like when they were in their homeschool setting.
Right. I understand that part, and that's clear, and that does need to be shared. But when you say law enforcement, I'm thinking of, for example, if there was an incident outside of school or maybe one of the scholars were a suspect in something, and then law enforcement came to the school and wanted access to their records. So when you say that statement, that's what makes me think of that. Is that what you're speaking of?
So the first change is really focused on emergency situation. So if there's an emergency situation, not necessarily where they would be coming and requesting things as part of an investigation. It would be more in crisis and they need that information to respond.
That's walking the fine line. Okay.
Can I make one more comment? With counseling, you know, usually if a teacher says this child need academic counseling or social counseling with their social skills, and they request specific things, you know, about what they want, okay, I can see the counselor sharing with the teacher and say, we're working on the things that you have recommended this child for counseling for. But as children get older, and we're talking about beyond elementary school, if children need to talk to a counselor because of some kind of social emotional problems, emotional problems, it's always said that what stays in our counseling session is private. And the only time I will, you know, share that is if I feel your life is in danger or you getting ready to hurt yourself or something of that nature. But other than that, you know, counselors, you know, are said not to share, and they want to make that child feel like they can express themselves and tell what's going on in their life without it being shared. So is, are you saying that's different now? That the counselors are required to tell what goes on in that counseling session?
Absolutely not. There's not a requirement of what they should be sharing. We rely on our school counselors to use their professional judgment and training on what the teacher or other staff in the building that work with that student would need to know. So yes, of course, there are going to be some things that are the counselor knows and, you know, the counselor may talk with the family or talk with the student, and they know that don't pertain to the teacher, and the teacher doesn't need to know it. There are some things, as we're working on developing their social emotional skills, that may be beneficial for them to know. So we really are relying on our school counselors and their judgment and training to make those decisions. There's not an outline or requirement, and that really doesn't apply to this policy at all.
Well, I was just asking because, you know, we do have some students that are acting out. And counseling is a good way for them to get help. If they feel that they can go to a counselor and it will be confidential and that counselor can work with them and try to help them whatever they're going through, then I think that more students will be, they will feel free to go to the counselors and say, hey, I need help. But if they feel that their information is not going to be confidential and that it's going to be shared, then they're going to be reluctant to go for help. And we want our students to feel free to be able to go for help if they feel that they need it without feeling afraid that it's going to be shared and, you know, that's going to make them feel uncomfortable. And a lot of parents say, what goes on in our home stays here, you know? So if they're having a big problem and they know that the counselor is not going to share it, like I said, other than if you feel that that child's life is in, say, in danger or they're in danger of hurting someone else or themselves, then we explain to them, yes, we will share this information. We want to explain that to you. But other than that, we want them to feel comfortable knowing that they can have somebody that they can come to for help without that person, you know, telling what's going on.
Yeah, I don't disagree with anything you said.
So I'm hoping that we have counselors, that we're telling the counselors, you know, to make the students feel that they can come to them and it will be confidential. And I'm hearing you say that they have the option of saying, well, it don't have to be confidential, that we can just share it.
So I, so really what I'm saying is that all situations of why a student is accessing a school counselor are different. And so I think depending upon the situation, there are different levels of needed confidentiality. You know, what that looks like for a kindergartner who's, you know, working through something versus a senior, you know, looks, can look very different. So that's why we rely on their professional judgment based on, you know, their skills and training in that field rather than having an overarching, you know, kind of one-size-fits-all directive.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions on this one?
Hearing no other questions. Julie, if you could take a vote? Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
LaShana? LaShana, are you there?
Just one.
Gloria?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Okay, so the motion passes. Child abuse or neglect?
So this is a revision to policy eighty-four, sixty-two. And there are two really minor updates. One is a removal of the specific date for the training. So previously, we had to have, for students, our child abuse prevention training happened before December fifteenth of every year. And this just states that we have to do it annually. For your information, we do continue to do that first semester. So that is happening in October after students return from fall break. It also adds both a school social worker and a school psychologist to the list of people who can deliver that instruction. They outline who's qualified to deliver that instruction for students. And so we're just adding those two professionals to the group of people who do that. And Warren, right now, our school counselors are delivering that instruction to all K-12 students.
So moved.
Thank you, Julie. Do we have a second to accept the policy?
Yes.
Thank you, Howard. Is there any discussion?
I just got, I'm just curious about something. I'm looking at the policy. It's only been a year, almost about a year since we revised it before last year. Was the revision last year the same as this year or was it something different?
Yeah, so really, the only changes were those two things. It was changing a date because it's taking out that December, I think it was fifteenth date. Sorry, I left my policies over there. The first time ever, I didn't carry them up with me. And also adding those, like it lists the names, like school counselor and, you know, who can do that. And so it's just adding these two names. So very minimal changes. It does provide us with the flexibility if, for some reason, we couldn't deliver that first semester and we needed to do it second semester, you know, we could do that. So I think it's important because it gives us some flexibility with both the people that deliver it and the time. But that's why it's a pretty minor change.
I just, I just, I just happened to notice it's such a short.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions or discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Julie, if you could call a vote?
Rachel?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
LaShana? Gloria?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Yes.
And?
There we go.
Yes, gotcha.
Thank you so much for your time, Ms. Woods.
Thank you all.
Mr. Clayton, contract bid recommendations.
President Burke, Dr. Hanson, and members of the board. Tonight, I present to you an addition to the Warren Central High School and Walker Career Center Phase Two renovations and additions project. Through the hard work of our CFO, Matt Parkinson, and our partners from Skilman, we have successfully completed the review and evaluation of the bids for bid category number thirteen, which is asphalt and paving, and recommend the board awards this contract to the Harding Group. With the board's approval, we will move forward with issuing the notice to proceed and contract for this work. Therefore, I formally recommend the addition of bid category number thirteen to the Warren Central Walker Career Center Phase Two renovation bid package for your approval.
So moved.
Did we need to discuss number twelve first? Or are we going to do that separately? Okay, sorry. Okay, Julie made the motion to accept bid number thirteen, and Howard seconded it. Is there any discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Julie, if you could call a vote?
Rachel?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
LaShana? Gloria? And I'm a yes.
Yes.
And yes, good. Okay.
Sorry to have stolen your thunder, Mr. Clayton. But did we need to revise twelve? I thought we did. Because I thought the wrong contractor was listed. Am I wrong?
Marcus, was the revision to bid twelve, was that in the consent agenda or were you going to cover that? Just the change of the company?
Yeah, I can cover that. And I'm sorry, I don't have that in front of me. But it's just simply a clerical error that took place on the approval from the August meeting, specifically with bid number twelve. The actual award should go to, and Dr. Hanson, if you have that?
West Electrical.
Yeah, West Electrical. That's where the actual bid should go to. It was simply a clerical error, and I thank Skilman, Tony, for catching that and correcting that for us. So if we could amend bid number twelve to West Electrical.
The dollar amount stayed the same. It's just that the name was changed.
That's correct, Mr. Dorsey. Everything is the same, just the clerical error on the company that we were at the bid to.
Because it is a bid, I would feel more comfortably to vote. So if we could have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Julie. Do we have a second?
Certainly.
Thank you, Howard. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Julie, if you could call a vote?
Rachel?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
LaShana?
Yes.
Gloria?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Passes.
Thank you so much, Mr. Clayton. Now, we're going to move on to discussion items, beginning with Mr. Simpkins.
President Burke, Dr. Hanson, members of the board. Before you for discussion is a new policy related to nursing mothers, policy forty-four, twenty-five. And it's geared towards specifically support staff because above and beyond what we always do and always continue to do for those mothers who wish to express breast milk while on the job, in addition to making sure that they have a safe, clean, private place that's not a restroom, God forbid, to do that, for support staff, it also allows the employer the flexibility to extend additional unpaid break time in order to get that done. So this is one of those areas where, when a nursing mother is on the job and wishes to express breast milk for their infant child while on the job, we do what we need to do to make sure that we can make sure that happens in a safe, clean, and private environment. And in this case, with support staff, they would have additional unpaid break time if that were so necessary.
Thank you so much, Mr. Simpkins. Mr. Parkinson?
Good evening, board members. This evening, I have two policies. They're related to one another pertaining to accounting records for discussion. Board policy seven thousand four hundred fifty would be a new policy. It pertains to the way that we account for equipment. It establishes a definition of equipment and a dollar threshold of at least $5,000 and states that we keep that inventory updated on a continuous basis throughout the year. Board policy seventy-four, fifty-five would be a revision of an existing policy. And what this policy speaks to is capital assets. That's going to include the equipment we were just describing, but also buildings and land. And what it does is states that we will keep that policy, or we will keep that inventory list in line with GAAP requirements, generally accepted accounting principle requirements.
And the last, but not least.
So what I'll be speaking to on this third item is... Kim, do we have those images?
So, well, that's not an administrative login. We can see them. If you, if the board pulls them up, they're under administrative in this item.
So I can speak to these. There's a, there's a housing development in between Creston and Grassy Creek on Prospect. It's going to be on the north side of the road. Immediately west of Creston and then Creston's football field to the west of that is an agricultural parcel. We're the owners of that parcel, and we have a lease with an organization that farms that area. The developers on the north side of Prospect Street have reached out to us about granting a right-of-way for a one-third of an acre property. That would be the very northern sliver of that agricultural parcel that we own. It would be for the installation of a passing lane. And so what we'd be bringing back to you next month is any bids that we've received. We've advertised those through the newspaper. We would hold a very quick hearing, either during or immediately following the regular school board meeting. We would take a look at any of the bids that we received, and then we would ask for your approval to grant that right-of-way for the installation of the passing lane to support the new housing addition next to Grassy Creek.
Can I ask a quick question? Would that affect the lease that we have going on right now?
So it won't. What I'm intending to do after discussing this with the board this evening, I didn't want to get ahead of the board, is reach out to the organization that farms that land. But there's about thirty feet in between the road and where the agricultural land begins. The installation of the passing lane is less than that. And any farm equipment that's driven over that land could be driven over the paved area. Right now, as part of the lease, they're responsible for maintaining the grass and the trees that are there. And so it would be a slight reduction in workload for that group.
Thank you.
Board members, as always, I would remind you, if you had any questions or concerns about the discussion items in the next month, please reach out to the members of cabinet that presented them. And with that, we are at closing comments. Gloria, if you would like to begin?
I would like to say just...
I would like to say just thank everybody for coming and be safe.
All the staff, admin, for all the great work that you're doing. And just let's continue to keep all of our babies in our prayers. Thank you.